But anyway, I think it's a great honor in introducing our great friend Greg Walden. Some of the things that Greg's done over the years, the SRS payment to counties for the Secure Rules in Schools payment coming into Lake County from back in the year 2000 up until this year has been a godsend for our road department. Whether we'll get it going forward, we don't know. He was always in the forefront trying to help us with that. Back in about 2002, $1.75 million came to our railroad. A little stopgap in there. We need a lot more money on our railroad. One thing about Greg is he believes in rural Oregon. He's always there for us. Give him a call, he's right there. We appreciate everything he does. I can speak quite a long time. I don't want to take his time. So, welcome.
Thanks, my friend Greg Walden. Thank you. Thank you very much Brad and Ken and everybody. Thanks for coming out today. It's beautiful. It's always sunny in Lakeview though, right? It's always like this. I want to, thanks for coming out. I'll give you a little update on some of the things we've been working on and then I really would rather hear from you and throw it open to Q and A. And I thank Commissioner Schreliem to use the facility too for meetings. Pretty nice digs actually. Couple of things we've been working on. One involves more climate than here, but for those who do engage air travel, we've been trying to reestablish air transportation out of Climate Falls. And TSA, Transportation Security Agency, has refused to come back to provide the security they have to have for the airline that wants to come in to come in. And they've said, no, what we're going to do is, they can come in, but we'll reverse screen the passengers. Now, do you know what that means? That means you get on the plane with everything, you fly to Portland, you get off the plane, then they screen you. I don't know about that. You all know. That doesn't sound real secure. I mean, and this is coming out of DC, only coming out of Portland office because they would get it. Then they've tried to be helpful and Port of Portland's been saying, well, maybe we can figure this out. But you think about this. That's the equivalent. Our district is as big as from the Atlantic Ocean to Ohio. And you know, I mean, look at the state. You're going to fly from the very southern end to the very northern end. Unsecured. Passengers not screening. That's your answer? Can we try again? You want to make a phone call. So it turns out that there are about a half a dozen airports where they're doing the same thing that have lost their air service. In order to get it back, they need the TSA to come back. The TSA have been there and the TSA says, we're not coming back. So I put together legislation. Good morning. We started just a little early. I was kind of a shock. We got seats over here. Collection plane will come out. No, I didn't.
I don't see it over here by the commissioner's work.
There you go. And so I put together legislation that requires the TSA to come back into communities like Climate Falls and there are some others spread around the country. Wyoming, there's one. There's an airport in Kansas. There's one up in Washington State. And so we got this bill drafted. We got it passed out of the Homeland Security Committee about 10 days ago and on unanimous vote. And the majority leader of the House has agreed to schedule it for the House floor on either April 13th or 14th. And so hopefully we'll get that passed. Senator Merkley's been real helpful on the Senate side, trying to get a similar provision in another bill. And so we're working together on this to try and move forward to get security reestablished and the air service reestablished into, in the Climate Falls. Come on in.
Excuse me, please.
And so we're making progress on that. So that's one thing. Another issue that's come up that affects all of us, especially so in more rural areas, involves our emergency medical service providers. The Obama Justice Department recently ruled, reinterpreted a statute that says that the EMTs when they arrive can no longer administer narcotics on the scene, understanding doctor orders. In the past, they've had an order from a physician that says, I'm authorizing you, you know, to go ahead and do this when you encounter such and such problem. A standing order. And so if you are in a traffic accident or something and you have a severe pain, broken leg, whatever, they can give you morphine right then and there. You're having seizures, they have anti-seizure drugs that they can administer. Well, now they come back and said, no, we're not going to allow that. Each individual case has to be authorized by a physician, even though they're trained to do this and have been doing this. And, and so the DEA, the Drug Enforcement Agency has said, we're going to enforce the law and prohibit it. So here we go again. So we've got a bill that I'm a sponsor of and backing that will restore this authority back to our EMTs, our emergency medical service providers to actually take care of us when there's an emergency and get the bureaucracy backed out of it. That bill will be before the Energy and Commerce Committee, of which I'm a member, and I'm going to be with the chairman of the committee later this week. And hopefully we'll get that moving as well. Some other pieces of legislation that we've been working on. Of course, we've passed for the third year in a row, federal forest reform legislation. That happened last year. We're still waiting for the Senate to help us on this. And so far, they haven't moved forward. We're trying to put pressure on to get that done. We need to be able to get in and manage our public lands effectively, routinely, and certainly better than they are today. We'll create jobs, we'll reduce the fire threats and all of that. This legislation would require that and further after a fire would require that the federal agencies get in, identify the areas that need to be cleaned up, clean them up, and 75% of the area has to be replanted. Right now, there's neither, there's no funding to really go in and replant after a fire and no expedited way to get in and remove the burned dead trees while they still have value. So this Forest Resiliency Act would allow for all of that, require that. Pass the House bipartisan majority and it's over in the Senate. But we're going to continue to work on that. Couple of other things. The so-called SHARE Act, this is legislation. Oh, we got a couple of seats over here. Please come on in. I kind of got wound up and started early, so. The SHARE Act is, relates to people who like to engage in hunting and fishing, which is most people in the West. And this clarifies, it's a combination of about eight different pieces of legislation that address various issues that have come up relative to our Second Amendment rights on public lands, to allow for both shooting and archery, stopping the EPA from banning lead fishing weights or lead in ammunition through a loophole that they'd found. And further, in some of the core, US Corps of Engineers properties, they are, there's some issues that have cropped up around the country where, let's say you're using a core facility to go out duck hunting or something, they're banning weapons, they're banning lawful weapons on core property. Well, how do you launch the boat to go do the duck hunting if you don't take your shotgun with you? And so we're just clarifying some of that and trying to get them straightened out. A big, couple of big changes would be that we would change the law to say that all federal public lands, our public lands would be open for hunting and shooting and all of that, unless closed, which is a different, in some forests, where they say everything's closed unless we tell you it's open. We flip that on. So that it's open unless they specifically close them. Same on the roads, more notification, work with the counties. That provision's in there. There are some efforts to get at something called the Equal Access to Justice Act. This is the ATM for the left that sues on everything and then gets taxpayers to pay the legal bills. So in this legislation, we require that the agencies identify and account for all the money spent on that law and who's getting money. Here to fore, that's a start. Here to fore, the agencies can't tell us, yeah, we got seats over here. Please come on in. Yeah, you're fine. The, the agencies can't tell us how much, how much they're spending, who's getting the money, or anything else. So this is a starting point to try to at least identify the problem. We know it's there. And then go do something about it. I'd like to do all kinds of things in that law, but this is a step forward. Finally, the House recently voted and I supported an effort, we think the first time in the history of the House, to join a lawsuit against the Obama administration under executive order where he used the pen to basically create amnesty on the immigration system. As you know, there's a court challenge to that. It's out of Texas. It's USB Texas. And under Speaker Ryan, we passed a resolution empowering the House to join with an amicus brief to weigh in and say, the President doesn't have that authority and we believe he violated the law. And so we got that passed as well. There's a lot of other things out there on the agenda, but since I'm from the House, not the Senate, we're not allowed to filibuster, so I'll stop with that. Thank you again for being out and happy to engage in a good dialogue here.
Congress, there's water here behind you.
Oh, thank you. Yes?
Yeah, I'm Bobby Cardland from Paisley. And I guess my question is, what can we do to help you so that we can start better managing our resources and our public lands?
Any pressure you can put on the Senate, any senator, anywhere, would be helpful. Because that's our roadblock right now. They have a different set of rules. They have a tougher threshold. They usually have to get to six districts to pass anything. We just have to get a majority. We can move a lot faster and easier in the House. So I understand their system's harder, but gosh almighty, we have three years in a row passed forestry legislation, bipartisan, good solid policy, Republicans and Democrats, and nothing moves in the Senate. And so whatever pressure you can help put on the Senate to say, this really, really matters. We've got to move on it. We've now had Senates under Democrats and Republicans and we haven't been able to move it. And we got, we got to fix that. I mean, it just, last year, I don't have to tell you this, but I will. Last year, we had the three biggest fires in America at the same time in our district. At the same time. How much of this do we have to endure?
Well, we're looking at a real possibility. We've got one sawmill re-raining and its chances aren't real good. You know, we've got to get something turned around. And grazing and everything else is in the same boat.
Yeah.
You know, we need to get back towards the center somehow.
You're, yeah, a long way back. So that raises one other, or two other issues. One is these proposed wilderness areas, which I've been fighting against. You know, these environmental groups want to make a big wilderness area all around Crater Lake National Park, the effect of which is to lock down management and kick out snowmobiles. Fundamentally, that's what they want. Then they have a proposal, basically do the same thing in the Ochocoh's outside of Primeville. And again, I held a meeting there, 150 people, and they're madder than you know what, because that's, that's actually where they go snowmobiling, recreating some of these areas, and that's what they're targeting. Then you go on east where I'll be tomorrow, or actually tonight, I'll be in Ontario. And Keen Shoes and the environmental groups are proposing a 2.2 million acre national monument out in Malheur County. And by the way, that would be twice the size of Grand Canyon National Park with probably , they just pull this stuff out of the air. And by the way, people have no idea how big our counties are. Lake County, Climate County, Harding, Malheur. You know, you can put New Hampshire inside Harding County and still have room to graze cows. True story. You do it here in Lake County, don't you? But, but the point is, so I've been trying to, the thing people don't understand, what you all do, there are already seven layers of management over that land. You got WSAs, you got Sage Route Habitat, you got all the agencies. It's not like it's not managed, trust me on that.
It's mismanaged though.
Thank you. And what we don't need is to create a national monument out there. I talked to Secretary of Interior about it. I raised it with the President in January. You know, it's kind of interesting, I, in my leadership position, I'm on the escort committee when dignitaries come to address Congress, including the President. Now, there are about 30 of us on it, so it's not as big a deal as it sounds, but you do get a little passing time. And so I asked the President, I said, this standoff that's going on in the National Wildlife Refuge is in my district. If you want to add gas to the fire, then move forward with this monument that we hear is rumored. If you want to kind of douse the flames, then come out and let it be known you're not doing that one. He kind of looked at me and said, I got a letter explaining it all. I heard the other day, by the way, when he was headed to Cuba, that he proudly had written back to Cuban residents. I've not heard from him, so I guess just be in the US. Now, Secretary of Interior, Resources Committee, I got the opportunity to question her at the dais where she, you know, the penalty if she's not telling us what she knows. She said, in answering my question, nobody on her staff, she's not aware of anybody on her staff working on that monument. I said, what about communication with the White House? She said she hadn't had it. But I understand under the 06, 1906 Antiquities Act, the President has given the authority in law on his own signature to create these monuments. We saw that with Bill Clinton. All the time. If he does this one, he'll eclipse Clinton's record in terms of land set aside monuments. And so it's, it's a struggle right now.
Do you know of any way, me as an individual citizen, I don't carry much clout as far as hammering on the Senate. Are there any groups or organizations or something that we could join forces with to...
I mean, there are grassroots organizations, certainly, but I think, you know, if you turn out at town halls that our senators have too, make sure you make your views known. That, I think that has an impact. Letters, the editor have an impact and people read that. And then there are different organizations that are active, whether it's forestry groups or ag groups or cattle and other groups that are speaking up on this, on the monument and on the forestry issue. Both, but you have more power than you think. You attend, you speak up. You know, it has an impact. Problem we have on this side of Oregon is we don't outweigh Portland. That's part of the problem. Yes, sir?
Ron Johnson, Christmas Saturday.
Yep. Good to see you again.
We, in Grange, have come up with an idea. And here is a copy of a resolution that we are going to present in June. It is, if we can get it passed, it's a, have Congress create a committee that will give more supervision over public land to the state and then have that passed down to the counties for the local economy. You made a comment about hunting on public land. The BLM has set aside too many acres north of, east of Fort Rock. They're having a elk problem up there, but with these road closed signs, a person with a hunting license and a permit to shoot this animal cannot trespass on that federal land to hunt. And so the elk are increasing. Another comment, the carbon dioxide is supposed to be a problem with our global warming. It's a proven fact, Christmas tree farms, second growth timber, take more carbon dioxide out of the air and put fresh oxygen back than an old growth forest. Why can't we cut the old growth trees, send them to the mill, create jobs for people and have cleaner air? I have more argument, but I'll shut up.
I just found the next chief of Forest Service. You know, it's interesting you make that argument on climate change because it's the very one I made several years ago. If you read the IPCC report, the UN, you know, Commission and all this stuff, they actually point out forest fires are one of the bigger emitters of carbon and other pollutants into the atmosphere. And what really ties the left up into knots is when you use their own information against their own opposition to their, to these policies to fix the problem. They don't know what to do. And that's what you run into on this public forest land management issue. Because they're anchored with the, with the environmental industrial complex that says, we don't want any productive activity on the forest. And, but they're conflicted because if you don't manage forests, they're not static. They grow, they die, they burn. And as a result, we release all this carbon. By the way, this is a wonderful, we call this a carbon sink, right? It's a wood product that's been harvested, it's not going anywhere. And that's sinking carbon. And we need to do more of that. And healthy green trees sequester carbon more than old dead dying trees. So I mean, it just adds up. And if we can reduce fire, and then by being active managers, then you also reduce the fire. You open up stands, by the way, you also get more snowpack. It actually hits the ground and pulls up. Second, if you have sort of back to nature in terms of the balance, trees are pumps. They pump water. When you have too many, water's all gone. There are examples all over our district where we've done unifor removal and all this, little springs come back, streams come back. We can be better stewards of our lands. We know this. We have some people we have to educate. Yes?
This is Kit Collins and I'm addressing our county road system.
Yep.
We're not quite in crisis mode yet, but this year, this fiscal year, we're having to deviate into our reserves for over two and a half million. We only have enough reserves for six years. It's been said that it's up to the locals to figure this out. How can we figure this out? Is there any chance the pilt payment could be looked at, the formula there? Commissioner Shown said last week that Lake County's share is about 32 cents an acre. Some counties are $2.64 an acre that the federal government reimburses a county. I don't know where he got his figures, but...
It's based on population. It's a factor.
But I wondered if there's a way to look at that formula to address that because certainly with just 7,800 people in Lake County and 720 miles of roads, which is to Portland and back.
Yep.
And Commissioners through the years have tried to set aside money for this reserve, but we just have six years left. So...
All right. That's a good point on the, on the forest.
It's a complicated one. I haven't looked at it, but the population TSA keep part of it.
Yeah.
So whatever you can figure out there...
All right, that's good to know. Yeah, we, you know, we were successful a few years back and actually finally fully funding pilt, which had never been funded up to its, its full level. And so we got that done. We've been able to maintain that. This is the year, I think it's this year, that that multi-year full funding runs out. We have to start over. It's the one thing, no offense to anybody that's a Harry Reid fan, but it's the one thing that I always appreciate with Harry Reid because Nevada is so much public land and so connected to pilt. I always figured we had the ace in the hole on that side of the aisle in the Senate because Harry was going to take care of Nevada, which means the rest of us got help. I wish you'd be more helpful on forestry stuff. So pilt is high on our list to fully fund. The formula is something that, you know, we'll take a look at, although I don't want to promise false hope because my guess, if you, if you start messing with population, there are more of them than us. And, and so, but maybe there's some tinkering around the edges or a reform of it we can look at.
Thank you.
Congressman, along with the pilt, I remember back when I was at the county, there's also this refuge revenue sharing provision from Fish and Wildlife Service that was always funded at 10 cents or less on the dollar, it seemed like. And so I don't know. I think the resources there are mostly natural gas, royalties out of the Gulf, but I don't know where that's at today. It was, might be a source.
We'll look at that one too. We're going to have to get real creative here. What we need to do is pass this legislation so we get more active management of the forest and generate revenues like we used to.
If I could follow up with that just a little bit, Congressman. Kit, of course, was county commissioner and, and that's what we're talking about primarily, but I represent the town of Lakeview nowadays and, and we're, we're feeling the same crisis at city level. Now, I don't know how that is with bigger places like, you know, Portland or Eugene or all, but lots of small cities are facing the same crisis. And part of the reason we are is because many years ago, when, when we harvested forests, counties shared with cities because they had the money to do that at that time.
No, we don't.
And in order to preserve and take care of their own systems, you know, those things have gone away. And so we're facing the same problems at, at cities and towns across your district as well as, and probably across the West. So solving this problem is not only important to counties, but it's important to cities and, and I think you need to look at all kinds of ways. And I would just suggest, and I'm not a, I'm not a raise tax kind of person, but I do wonder sometimes if we need to take a look at the federal gas tax. You know, I, I hate to say this, it sounds a little bit headed in the wrong direction, but here we are with gas prices at about 50% of what they were, you know, a couple of years ago. And there may not be a better time than now to take a look at how to maybe adjust that without it having a huge impact currently on, on prices of fuel. And yet using that increase in tax possibly to better fund the Federal Highway Trust Fund as well as, as share that with states. Maybe it's a source that you could fully fund a program to counties who might also, you might get the cities on board if you could find a penny or two to throw our way too, so.
Yeah, I know, in Bend, they just tried that with a five cent a gallon gas tax and it went down pretty handily. Yeah, so the voters kind of spoke. The, the good news is, we just, for the first time in, I don't know, probably a decade, actually passed a fully funded five-year transportation bill in the Congress that signed into law at the end of the year. So, without raising the gas tax. So we were able to find other funding sources, a creative funding source that they found some to fund, to fund it. Yes, sir?
While you're on the subject, I'm the Lake County Boardmaster.
Ah, very good.
Kind of want to echo Kit Collins's concerns about our funding. A couple of questions. SRS, is it, is it gone? Or we're, we need your support on it. And I hear there is a little bit of talk now in the background. Gas and registration fees, we get $700,000, but Monoma County gets $45 million. And they turn around and give $20 million right back to the city of Portland. We don't have the base population of that 80,000 to do it. And there's three counties on this east side that's going to go completely broke. And we will not be able to put the service out far as snow flying, emergency service. You're talking four employees on 754 miles of road. There's got to be a way to come up. And community solution is, we've been there thinking that for 10 years, trying to figure that out. There's no room on the taxes, bonds to put that in there. So if you can kind of give me an update on the SRS?
Sure. So SRS ran out of money two years ago. And I worked with Speaker Boehner who gave me a commitment for a one-year extension of SRS. By the time we were done, I got him to do a two-year extension and we passed that last year as part of also a package that resolved a funding formula problem for physicians that treat Medicare patients called SGR. It had been a problem since 96. We took care of both. And so rather than just one year, I got a two-year extension on funding for SRS. That's the payment now is the last one which gets paid now or in June for this fiscal year.
Just got it last week.
Yeah, okay. So they just arrived. I, I've actually supported, I voted for the legislation that became law that has funded SRS every single time. I'm the only one in the delegation, by the way, that's voted for the bill that became law each time that produced SRS. Because they've sometimes been in other packages, all that, but as fate would have it, I've actually voted for each time. I tell you though, the federal government, by the way, has enormous deficit. It's not like we're cash rich. And we're trying to figure out how to close that deficit. And it's getting, we, whenever I've been able to get SRS funding, we've had to find offsets, we have to cut something else. And that happened here with some entitlement reform was part of the mix to, to the, the past, as part of fixing the doc fix and some other things that we tagged and got funding out of for SRS. So one year it was roll your own tobacco because the cigarette tax didn't apply to roll your own tobacco products. And somebody figured out how to make a machine that qualified as roll your own to get around the tobacco tax. So we closed that little loophole that got open and they use that as a revenue source one time. I mean, you're down scraping the barrel here trying to find it. Otherwise, it has to come out of the interior, out of the agency budget. So then you're going after the Forest Service or the BLM. So you have to take it out of a budget that's already under stress or trying to get more money in for the green sale program or whatever. So, so that's our budget rules. Speaker Boehner allowed me to go outside of that and, and tap into this other fund. It's gone. I don't know what Paul thinks about all this, although he supported this last time. We got these firefighting costs we're trying to deal with. I mean, there's a bunch. So it's, it's hard to figure out going forward. It's not to say we won't, but it's, and remember, this was supposed to be like a five-year program.
At the beginning.
Yeah, like in 2000. So here we are, 16 years later, still trying to get money out of the federal government and we've never resolved the underlying issue, which is forest management. This was the bridge to get us to forest management. And so, you know, at some point, the problem you have, and as I say, I've worked on this, I've been, helped get it put together each time, but it gets harder and harder because my colleagues from other states go, you want what for what? And so you go make the case. I remember convincing some of my Texas colleagues, because they had a little bit of forestry in Texas, that they were getting $200,000. They were so excited, they couldn't wait to help me. What, what were we getting? 200 million? They've kind of figured that out now. And so it's a, it's a bit more of a challenge. Not to say we won't get, do something, but it's, I'm just trying to tamp down expectation here. Because we've had to ratchet it down each time and some cases say, we know this is running out. this is running out, in order to get it done. So, yes?
Yeah, I'm Tom Wider. I have a local hobby business here, and to go with some of these talks about the tax, working with the local county commissioners, that's forestry.
Right.
And we've been discussing the lack of timber coming into the sawmill we have left, and it's really done us all, not only the sawmill, but the operators in the circle and the community in, you know, jeopardy. And one of the biggest things I see that's, that's creating problems is that we have this free trade, wood coming out of Canada, Brazil, things like that. It comes across the border, basically, we have to pay twenty-five cents on that dollar on the dollar exchange, because they're making a lot of money. They're cutting their timber for free, they don't charge for it, being helped shipping it and everything else. And then when we get into the US, the loggers and the operators and ag and everything in the US are dealing with EPA regulations on the equipment and everything else that we run. And it, like the machine in Canada that costs five hundred thousand dollars to process a log, in the US costs an operator seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Is that because of pollution control they require here?
Yeah, your, your emission controls and everything else and that technology that we require in the United States. So, so our, basically our regulations in the US are, are driving our cost off to a lot of timber. Plus, we have to pay the stumpage, we have to pay state tax on that same timber after...
Don't forget all the litigation.
There you go, all that, goodies and all, it's, it's, so, I guess, you know, this happened, ag and across the board, I mean, it doesn't matter what you're talking about, this is happening. So, if we could straighten up this free trade and make it fair trade, that'd bring money back into your coffers to help with roads and all these other things that need to be done. That money's actually being, taken away from our government, our communities, to help other countries. They're bringing that wood in, flooding a market where we, our sawmill cannot sell that lumber at a profitable, and it's odd how, why this is happening, why no one has seen this, that by just adjusting that, that trade that's coming in, all of a sudden, we may not be wealthy, but we will have one and two, to straighten some of these things out.
So, a few years ago, it's probably been eight or ten now, this issue rose to the level of the ITC and was litigated in the, in the trade world, and US won on softwood imports from Canada. And Canada had to pay their, I, I don't remember all the duties, I don't remember all the specifics of it, but they actually set up about a half a trillion dollar fund that came to the US for softwood, whatever, that the industry controls, and they put new requirements on because they were convicted of dumping at that time. So, you have to make a case, you gotta prove it going forward. And I don't know if it's out of kilter now, it sounds like, from your perspective, it is, but this has been, the industry has taken these cases before, through the International Trade Commission, the ITC, and won.
Well, it sounds like that got lifted here just several months ago, and this is the reason, this is the reason that we've lost, I think it's four sawmills right in, in Oregon and California, I mean, they closed their doors, part of that's permanent timber now. But that got lifted, and so now we're right back to their dumping of this, bringing logs, lumber, everything else, and I'm sure ag products, I don't know the whole dynamics of it all, but it's a big concern, because, you know, we're talking about, where does the money come from, or straight from the bottom of the barrel?
But the other issue is actually getting access to supply.
Well, yeah.
I mean, that's, and, and that's something our country should fix.
Right.
We can control that easier than one of these cases that takes a year, and that means passing legislation to change how we manage our own forests.
Right.
And, and you know, I, we, we gotta fix our own problems here at home first, and it's a, it's a huge frustration. I actually spoke to the American Forest Resource Council, the timber guys, and mill owners and others, in Stevenson earlier in the week, and, you know, one of the mill owners from our district was complaining that they literally cannot get their, something, well, I won't name it, but Southern Oregon, and they cannot get enough logs to keep up with the mill. So, they still have demand for the finished lumber, they can't get the logs off the forest. And when you, you know, drive through this country, you see all the burned dead timber, you think, at least we can get that out. Oh, no, no, we can only do roadside, hazard trees. I mean, this is ridiculous. Nobody manages their own timberlands this way, not tribes, not counties, not state, nobody private would do it this way, only federal. And we, it's because we leave ourselves so open to litigation and appeal, because we have such a system that's out of whack, and it's become an industry for these groups.
Right.
It's a financial industry.
Well, and you know, you can have logs coming through the front door, but if you don't wash that, that market, if they can't get that lumber out the back door, it won't matter.
That's true. No, it's both sides.
Yeah, we're, you know, and, and everybody's catching on the, the log thing, and that's great, because like here, this, this is a working circle where you, that mill can't go outside of it.
Well, I, I have talked to Jim Penya, who's Region Six forester, about being able to go outside it, and he's sympathetic to that. And then I know there's work underway on biomass to be able to generate some additional resource, biomass, woody biomass to help with, generate additional income, and so both of those are in play.
Well, and the one thing that they did, he did respond to Jim, was that if a sale outside of this working circle was human, went no sale, that they would be able to go out and purchase that sale, but be aware of that, because if a sale goes no sale, there's a factory solved of why that, where nobody bid on that sale. So, it doesn't really do the sawmill or operators in the circle, and they get to go after timber when they want. There's a reason why it got put up wrong, it's maybe due to job reasons, but also, and this mill needs about forty million foot feet to sustain itself. Right now, it's said they're putting up fifteen, but it's set that it's ten million feet. So, it's a hundred miles for them to pick up private timber from somewhere else, especially after the Barry Point fire, wiped out all, all of their ground. So, this is really a touchy subject right now, in times of the essence, to do something about this. And we're within just a few months of timber sales outside of the area coming up to bid, and if this doesn't get resolved, we're in a whole other season of no, no logs and how long can this...
Right. We've been in contact with Paul's as well, so.
Very good.
I mean, we're, we're doing everything we can, because history shows when you lose a facility, then your jobs are gone, with the logging site, because there's no mill. And then the management really suffers even further, because there's no industry left to do the work that still needs to be done.
Yeah.
And, and the country's littered with places now where they don't have loggers, they don't have professional timber followers and everything else, and the equipment.
Right.
And now what do you do on your federal forests, how do you manage it? You know, we've come a long way from where the environmental groups would complain about under, undervalued timber sales. What'd they call them, the, they used to complain that, that, you know, the costs and all, their government was...
Deficit sales.
What's that?
Deficit sales.
Yeah, deficit sales. Now, we're to the point where it's accepted that we just gotta go pay to get you to go take, I mean, almost, I mean, not the green sale program per se, but you think about the hundreds of millions of dollars we're spending to thin out the forests, that used to happen as part of a timber sale. Now, you're lucky to get enough valuable logs out for the mill. It's, it's always interesting how they, they describe one of these sales and how much volume there is, but how much volume actually is gonna run through the mill, right?
Exactly.
And then, while I'm fine with the collaboratives and I'm fine with the, you know, stewardship project, stewardship doesn't get a dime in county.
Right.
And if we default to only that, then you're not gonna have the green sales either. It's gonna all go stewardship, and I don't think that's a good way to go either. And so, you don't get the revenues for your roads with stewardship, and it really reduces the business, so, there's a lot of broken pieces in this management.
Yeah, well, I think we could come up with a quick fix to save just the, basically what we have right now, and start working on long-term solutions for it.
Yeah, I agree. Yep.
I'm Laura Monocle, Lake County. I'm wondering if there's any way that the designations, environmentalist, conservationist, and preservationist can be applied to the various groups who are, I mean, there are people who want everything to stay the same as it was in eighteen fifty, their ideal time, everything was perfect, they wanna go back there, preservationists. And then there's the, what we call environmentalists, which are really mostly preservationists, and the true environmentalists are the ones who keep the forest use for the people, and then the conservationist is kind of a term that...
I call those ranchers and farmers. Yeah, I, you know, I grew up on cherry orchard and the dals, I mean, I've been around farmers and ranchers all my life. If they ruin the soil, they don't have a crop or a future. If they, if they overgraze and destroy the habitat, they got a real problem the next year. If you just clearcut and never replant, which you can't do in Oregon, like, anyway, but if you did, then you don't have another crop for the next generation. And are there abusers of any of that? Sure, you always have your outliers in anything, but most ranchers I know are always looking to see how they can improve their operations, how they can manage better, how they can, you know, really maximize water usage, minimize inputs, maximize outputs. I mean, it's, I don't know. And then you get sort of the government in the middle of it, and then you get the lawyers and the, by the way, I'm not a lawyer.
Good for you.
Actually, I get some, some round of applause, I mean, but, but you, I mean, you get all this appeals and everything, and you should have the right to appeal your decision. I'm fine with that. It shouldn't be unending and used as a proxy to get to a, a policy result, you know, and by that, I mean, if you wait long enough after a fire, if you can delay the salvage sale after a fire long enough, he's never gonna bid on it, because there's no reason to, because it's blue stained pine, it has no value. And, and that shouldn't, that system shouldn't work that way. We oughta be able to go in, make the decision, make the right decision, make it with environmental underpinnings, that's why, you don't wanna create, you know, all kinds of problems, you wanna fix them. But to do nothing, I think is wrong, too. Yeah?
Is there a legislative way to share the risk, you know, now that they have big fires? When people say no action in an area and they bid on it, do, wouldn't it be good if they assume some of the risk for the cost?
I, I think, you know, if, if you bid on a timber sale, bid on a project, you have to have a bond, I think, right? Isn't that true? To have skin in the game. Why don't you have to have that to appeal and stop it?
Yeah, that, that's what I'm...
I mean, they're, each side, this is so out of balance. Each side should have to have skin in the game, and I've supported efforts to do that, we haven't been successful yet, but I've supported efforts to do that. And, and this equal access to justice is so out of whack, that literally it's become an ATM machine for quote-unquote nonprofits. Well, look at that, a double dose, thank you. It's not really bad, yeah. Could be, yeah.
Congressman Walden, Mike Warren with the Lakeview Town Council, and what I wanted to ask is, there's a new industry that perhaps could bring prosperity to Lake County and Lakeview for sure. The, what I'm wondering is, what is the feeling with the, the launch of the Green Fleet recently, the clean fuels that, that are gonna be processed by Red Hot Biofuels here in our community? What's the feeling of Congress on supporting it? I know there were a lot of federal dollars at Department of Defense and Army and Navy.
You know, it's, we're, we're in a time of transition on those sorts of incentives, I would say, because budget crisis in Washington, I mean, we're trying to get this deficit down, so anything you do, spend, and yet there's a, so there's a feeling that helping launch new innovative industries and all is still a good thing, but some of these industries now, it's hard to say they're nascent, it's hard to say they're just getting their feet on, I mean, I'll probably offend somebody, but how long does the wind energy really need sort of double subsidy? Which is, you have to buy it, there's a, you know, requirement for renewable energy purchase, and oh, by the way, you're gonna get tax subsidy to build it. At some point, I think, as taxpayers, we have to say, how long, do you do that forever?
No.
Do you do it for a while to kinda get the industry and get the innovation going? We have. But, but, so that applies against all these, and so right now, I, I've seen a real shift over the last, oh, eight or ten years, where it was pretty well understood, okay, this is a good thing, we're gonna go down this path. Now, there's a sense of being fiscally responsible, you can't do this forever, and maybe some industries have outgrown the need for that subsidy, and we should end it and look at other things to move forward. The biofuels, I, I would tell you, had greater impetus behind it before we discovered how to really efficiently do fracking, because part of it was to fill the gap on foreign oil imports. Well, we now know we have incredible oil and natural gas reserves that we can access that have driven the price of oil to the basement. I mean, now the oil patch is hurting and, and all of that, they'll recover, but it's taken it from a hundred and some dollars a barrel to, what are we, probably thirty now or something? It got as low as a little before, it was low at thirty. It was an enormous swing, so now everything's sort of shut down, it's sort of moving bottom. So, when you're looking at these alternative fuels, there's, A, the supply question, which I think has been mostly resolved, and B is the environmental question, and the argument I can make on biofuels is, it can be a partner with helping clean our forests, it can be a partner with other things, depending on which kind of biofuel you're, you're talking about. And so, it can be a job creator and a partner in a bigger effort that both gives you clean fuel and healthier forests. So, the extent to which you can marry it up now, I think, is really important. Yes, sir?
Walt Lawton, formerly of AQOK Radio.
Right. Good to see you again.
Good to see you.
You're still my Pollock role model.
Thank you very much.
You know, Harris.
Jane Barber.
That's right. He's died here, Irving.
My wife has recently been diagnosed with a rare heart disorder.
I'm sorry.
And we here at the county have Regents Blue Cross, Blue Shield, they have denied a procedure that she needs. It's actually a quite common procedure, I won't go into all, all the aspects here. We have reached out to all of our representatives, and I have heard from some of them, they are on board, and I was just wondering if your office, is there anything you can do to...
We can do it.
...do it on the fly out, or if you're willing to do it online.
Yeah, Riley, where's Riley? Riley?
Yeah.
Are you taking notes on that?
Yeah.
Correctly. Okay, yeah. There's, we're limited in some respects on what we can do, because it's a private sort of deal, but we can inquire, and that sometimes is help, kind of move the needle. So, I'm sorry for what you're going through, maybe there are other alternatives, I don't know. That's, that's, we'll, we'll follow up. Thank you.
Yeah, you're familiar with the...
I am.
And I kinda wanted to get an update on, really a two-part question, questions and comment. I saw you on Lou Dobbs, by the way. And Lou Dobbs, as you know, the, the situation with them being charged for the same, I think twice, I won't call it a crime, but I found it very strange that the, the USDA attorney and the judge brought the charges and both retired the day after. I find that very strange, and I'm scratching my head along with my neighbors. And Lou asks you, why not investigate them? My question is, why not? Why aren't we investigating them? Because I find it, I can see maybe one retired, but both are completely...
Well, okay, so let me go back, because actually the judge who issued the lesser, the lesser sentence retired the next day. It was the end of his career, this was the last case he had. He served very distinguishedly, he actually is the one who wrote and said, this, this is cruel and unusual punishment, even whatever his terms were, those won't be directly, because I, but, but that's what he said. So, what happened, because we have looked into it pretty deeply, I've been in communication with the Hammond's lawyers, because each of them have a separate one, and the Susan's. And, and what happened was, it is a federal law under which they were sentenced. That federal law gives the judge no discretion on the sentence. It is a mandatory minimum five-year sentence, okay? That was the law under which they were tried and convicted by a jury of their peers in Pendleton. So, the court sat in Pendleton, and a jury convicted the Hammond's of arson under this law under which they were charged, brought by the US Attorney. And we can argue whether they should've used this law to begin with, but that's the law they used, it's on the books, and mandatory minimums like this one give judges no discretion, none. Minimum five years, period, that's the statute. He said, this isn't fair, this isn't right. He gave him a shorter sentence. Justice Department said, actually, Judge, you don't have that, that you don't have that flexibility under this law. You're not allowed to violate the law and give a shorter sentence. That's what it is. And so, then, they came back and appealed the sentence, and the court said, you're right, the federal law says minimum five years, period. Doesn't say the judge can do two, or one, or three, five. Mandatory minimum sentence. So when we vote those in, no, that's restricted. So, that's, they weren't tried twice, the length of sentence was appealed, and they were sentenced to serve the full five years. Now, we can argue whether that's right or wrong, but that's, that's why, for an investigative purpose, that's what, that's what happened. So what can you do about it? Not a lot. Although, I would tell you, I've been working with the Chairman of the Judiciary Committee to change the law so that nobody gets tried under that one the way they were and sentenced under it. And to say that if you're following traditional ag practices, you know, you're doing backburns, you're doing, you know, burning out, you know, like we do, to kind of invasive species or whatever, that if you're following, you're not going to get tried that way. Because now it's opened the door, I've had ranchers say, so if I burn the weeds out of the ditch, and it, wind comes up, blows on the federal, am I going to go to jail for five years? So we've been working for several months with Chairman and his staff, and now have reached an agreement that he's comfortable with, moving forward to change the law, so that now we'll have these exceptions that really spell out what an ag practice is, traditional ag practices, traditional forestry practices. And, and so you don't have this problem again. My, my hope is, going forward, if they apply for clemency, which I think they will, if we were successful to get this changed into law, which is a long road, that, that they could point to this to say, you know, this was never the intent of the other law, this is what Congress means. All this is a very slow and painful process.
Can the next president pardon that?
They can, yes. I, I have no hope this president would.
No.
And beyond that, the, there's a whole procedure that they go through to recommend to the president, a clemency or a pardon, and that procedure itself can take a year or more. So, I mean...
And, and is it true that if Mrs. Hammond, with the good health of her neighbors, but if she cannot hang on to the ranch, that goes to the federal government?
I don't believe that's true. There, there was this issue, and I've, I've talked to, well, my staff talked to their attorney about it. There was a provision, they, in addition to the sentence, there was a requirement to pay several hundred thousand dollars in damages. That was part of the settlement, or part of the sentencing. And they put a, they did like a first right of refusal to the federal government until that was satisfied. And that's now been satisfied. So, the claim's been paid, first right refusal goes away. Now, and I don't understand all of this, and it's their business, not mine, but my understanding is, that was almost something they, that would benefit them, not harm them. The federal government would take them out if need be, because trying to find a buyer might be a problem. So it was almost, it was negotiated among them, their attorneys, their accountants, all of that. It looked, to me, in the face like, well, what's this? Sort of a double down, and it's not. The, the big issue they face is, they're raising permits, an extension of the permits, because those are up, and they're in dispute, and they're on appeal, and I can't intervene on those things when they're in appeal. And so, the government will have to decide, they reissue them.
Going back to the Bundy's, and when all this started, when they were, I'm using the right term, redress of grievances, when they were reaching out to state authorities, why did your office not respond to them, or even acknowledge they were there? Was there a reason for that?
We did, first of all.
Because I remember Adam saying, I've reached out to the Congressman, the Senators, the county commissioners, nobody is talking to us, no one will acknowledge we're even here.
That's not accurate.
Okay. So...
I did not talk directly to Adam Bundy. He twice talked at length with my Chief of Staff, however, because he called into the office, and we communicated. I was also in communication with the FBI during that process, and with the local elected officials in the county. And it was under their advice that I not go out there, even though I offered him if it would be helpful, but the consensus was, it would not be.
So, but there was a conversation that you had with, not you personally, but with them, to find out what their grievances were? The ranchers?
Well, okay, remember, nearly everybody in the occupation was from Nevada, Idaho, Arizona, Utah, they weren't local. I was in communication directly with local ranchers, some of whom met with them, and others out there. So I was in communication with people that I've worked with for years, and including Susie Hammond. So, I've known Susie and Dwight and Steve since 98.
Okay. I appreciate that. So where we're at with them now is just, really not much...
It's pretty hard. Because the federal law says five years mandatory minimum sentence. So when it says mandatory minimum, that's what happens, you take away all the flexibility the judge had. The irony is, had the judge had the flexibility of just up to a five-year sentence, then this judge would have said, nah, this doesn't make sense. And then he said, and I thought this really summed it up, he said, had this fire been lit in the way it was, in LA, and burning up a canyon to a housing subdivision, I'd be all in. That's what he said. But it's not. It's eastern Oregon, and it's out in the high desert, and, you know, it burned a hundred and what, 53 acres or something, I may be wrong in that number, of federal public land. And by the way, I know this has never happened, but I would swear once, there was a public started fire that got on a private one.
Exactly. Double sentence.
Exactly.
So just clarifying, I'll be done. So you were talking to them, but the FBI said, it's best just don't communicate with them, period. So that was them telling you just...
No, I still went out, said what I said on the House floor.
I appreciate that, I thought that was very good.
And that was a fire. You know, in those situations, the, the, sort of the balance I was trying to find, I didn't want to inflame and cause a worse situation, because the tensions were high, and there are lots of firearms around on both sides, and, you know, it was pretty, it was pretty, and the worst, last thing I wanted to do was show up and make it worse. And in the early days, they thought, you know, protests will happen, and there'll be a couple of days, and then, you know, they'll make their case and leave. I don't think anybody believed they were going to settle in for it. And, and the local ranching community, many, now, it's divided, the whole county, it's really tragic. But in the early days, many of the ranchers who were sympathetic of the messaging went out, there was a group that went out who I was in communication with, who had said, because Bundy had said, if the local community says we should go, we'll go. They went out and met with them and said, you made your point, it's beginner to do us more harm than good, we think it's time for you to go. And then it grew, and then it grew, and then it attracted people from all over to come to things like that. There was a guy from New Hampshire, who was there in Iowa, and, I mean... I'll tell you, there were, there are a lot of troubling pieces of it all. The one that really troubles me, though, is that the FBI, in the end, denied they fired any rounds.
Yes.
And it was the, the Shute's County Major Crimes Task Force, and the DA in Mallard County who figured out, through all the videos and all, they had it. And I don't for the life of me know why they denied what they did.
And I understand that the Oregon State Police broke their own code and their own book written, that you cannot set up a roadblock like that unless you're pursuing a violent felon. That was a very dangerous roadblock, and you're not supposed to set those up, and a lot of retired police have told me that too, it's very dangerous, very dangerous.
We certainly saw it play out that way. And the, I think you'll find, there's a pretty serious investigation going on in Justice Department over what happened there with the FBI. And the FBI is doing their own. And the state FBI, well, I've not talked to him directly about it, I've heard secondhand, he was furious about it. Because this was an outside, really elite SWAT team that's global. I mean, these are incredible people that do this work and hostage rescue and all that, and that's why, for the life of me, why wouldn't you just acknowledge it? I mean...
They might have had the shares of Ruby Ridge in the back of their mind, didn't want anymore.
Well...
They're keeping it undercover.
Yeah.
Low profile.
And I think that's also why, because of Ruby Ridge, because of a couple of these other incidents that really went bad, I think you saw the sheriff in the lead, not the FBI, even though the FBI was clearly involved. And they were doing everything they could to diffuse it as they went, that's why it was open, and people could come and go, and all of that. Because they were just, they did not want to create that conflict.
Fuel was there, they just didn't want to pour it off.
Yeah. And they, they, nobody wanted, none of us wanted that, to put it out, so... Yes, sir?
Couple of things. John Albers from Lakeview, Double Legal Mining Company. Gentleman in back, I believe, from Paisley. What we need to form is a local citizen committee, raise the money, do like the environmentalists, sue the Department of Interior. Answer to you, sir, the NEPA process. All these things, when they're being put together by the Department of Interior, Forestry, Fish and Wildlife, in the draft process, they're supposed to be submitted to the state, county, local, and Indian tribes for review and input. They're not doing that. Under that, the environmentalists just sued Fish and Wildlife for not following the NEPA process in the sage grouse, and for not listing them as endangered. They won their lawsuit, the management program's supposed to stay in effect, and now Fish and Wildlife has to move forward with possibly listing it as endangered. If they do that, we're going to lose the access to all those lakes. I've tried to contact you, your office, your emails, your phone, no callbacks, I've been through the Federal Protection Act. There's all kinds of loopholes and policies that weren't followed, we should stop this action. And there's another gentleman involved that even has more information, we're trying to get it to the right sources, but we're hitting brick walls.
Well, here I am. What do you have?
In the NEPA process itself, in the Federal Land Protection Act, there's guidelines on what the Secretary of the Department of Interior can do.
You're talking about FLYPMA?
Federal Land Protection.
Management Protection.
Yeah. In there, the Secretary is limited how much they can do. Like, all bureaucracies, they're doing more than they're capable, it's like our President and the National Department of Commerce.
Right.
We need to get this under control.
Right. So the way you do that is change the law, which is what I...
By the time we change the law, we're going to lose this land.
Well, okay, so if you don't change the law, you give up on that, you're going to lose the law.
The laws are there, we need to follow the inactive and file the lawsuits.
Well, I don't disagree with you on that.
But unfortunately, it starts at about $10,000, and I don't have it, otherwise I'd do it myself.
Right.
This is what the environmentalists do. Then the environmentalists win the lawsuit, the government pays them off, they take that money, and sue the government again.
That's what I've been talking about, this Equal Access to Justice Act, which we're, I'm all for repealing, changing, getting the government to report on it, can't do any of that, so we're pushing that. The NEPA changes, though, we have had modicum of success in Little Pigs, Healthy Forest Restoration Act being the example, where you can do pre-decisional appeals, you have to have skin in the game to play, and you have to, the judges have to consider a balance of hearts. That's all in the law that I helped write several years ago. I want to keep writing the laws that change it, so you don't have to sue. And I want the agencies to follow the laws that are there. And so, you're right, especially on this mineral withdrawal, but most of that's a state issue with Bad Maps.
It's on the guys at the sage grouse.
No, no, I, I'm...
And then we've got the National Monuments coming in, which Pelosi just got a $20 million acre one passed in New Mexico that the people didn't want, but that's her legacy, she wants to leave behind. The people didn't want it. We don't want what's going on with our federal lands, we manage it, we know what's going on here. Unfortunately, just round numbers, we're above the 2,000 people in this county. Portland, the environmentalists, are 10,000. They don't care about us, they don't care about the environmentalists. I'm just giving round figures, that's why we get stepped on because they, they want the vote numbers to get re-elected. And the environmentalists keep suing and suing and suing. They made it because nobody in the Department of Interior and the other will follow all the guidelines and regulations to the T. There's always something.
Right.
The T that doesn't get crossed, the I doesn't get dot, that opens the door for the lawsuit. They leverage him to do what they're doing to the land, which is taking the rights away from all of the people.
Right. I don't disagree with you. And I'm trying to do what I can to change the legislature, to hold their feet to the fire, to deny them funding, or make sure they're using the property on these things.
What I need from you today before I leave is somebody in your office, I can contact directly...
Riley?
So we can...
Thanks for staying with me.
Information to you about the land, because I've spent hundreds of hours in helping most people. The Federal Land Protection Act, if you didn't hear, know it. So, you worked in the department for a while, so you know it. But that's what guidelines, what the Department of Interior can do, forestry, fishing game, everybody. And they assume, we don't know, they know. So they follow a process to get done what they want, but they don't always follow the regulations and the guidelines. But me, as a mining company, trust me, they keep me on the regulations and guidelines.
Well, here's my pushback on them. If I'm a rancher, and I got more cattle than I'm allowed, on, on the lease, on the, where I've got my permit, what do you do to me if you're the BLM? You'd come in after me. It's, it's who comes after you when you don't have the right horse management numbers on, where you're managing your land, our land, on horses? Well, we don't, yeah, exactly. There, there's no equal balance here.
That's like when I was getting my, put up my reclamation bond for my mining.
Right.
I was told by somebody who's getting ready to retire from the agency, gave me a copy of the regulations, said, make sure you read these and know these before you go in your review. I had to quote them, the regulations and guidelines, to get my process through, because they were incorrect in their understanding of the regulation. But if we team up together, we can use that to stop a lot of these actions. But we need...
You're right.
Somebody needs to form a local committee, we all need to be a part of it, we need to donate, so we can file our own lawsuit against the inner agencies, against the environmentalists, put a hold on them. Nobody's going up against them, so the environmentalists are taking our land rights away. I served this country for eight years, and when I came out, I was looking at homesteading. I found out while I was in the service, the federal government took the Homesteading Act away. So I lost my dreams when I got out of the service. I could homestead in Alaska, I was stationed there for two years, trust me. Lakeview is Florida compared to Alaska.
That's where the Europerex.
I, I wonder, we're constantly threatened with something being put on an endangered species list, and cattlemen have to pay for their cattle to graze on federal land, but I, the wild horse thing seems to be nutty. They're trying so hard to do the right thing, but it, it is not working. It's not legal to sell horse meat here, but in, in other countries, it is.
We can't even export it.
That, I was, we cannot?
I don't believe so.
Oh, then, anyway, aren't we going at this from the wrong?
Yes.
Is it, is it, every, I think horses are great, and I know that's a horrible thing to say, slaughter horses, but isn't this crazy to do the way they're doing, rounding them up, trying to get them ready to be adopted?
That nobody wants to adopt.
Yeah.
Yeah. So you know what happens, I don't remember the, do you know the exact number we spend, I'm putting you on the spot? It's like 40 million a year, I'll make it up.
Yeah, it's, it's between 40, 50,000 a year per, per lifetime per horse that they do.
Forty to 50,000 per life horse.
Once they gather them up and put them out on...
Well, I know they're buying awful expensive hay, and they're shooting it out, and there's tractor wheels up there.
And so, what we do as taxpayers, they, they round up these horses that never go out, never get off, I mean, nobody ever wants them. And then we house them and... And then we house them until they die and we pay for that. I mean, that's what's happening. And they, the Congress has denied, I've opposed, you know, I, I've tried to... My veterinarian, who I'm convinced I bought a pickup for because of our dog, but anyway, he told me, he said, "Look, you can't, this wild horse thing," and he's a horse lover. He goes on these big, you know, endurance rides and is the veterinarian and all, but he said, "You've got to be able to manage these." And instead, they, you know, in Congress, it all gets political. And so we'll have these amendments and they pass, I oppose them, but they pass, to say you can't do horse slaughter, you can't do any of these things. Because everybody goes, "Oh, you know, it's black duty. It's this, it's that, it's, you know, a childhood dream about a horse on the wild on the range." They don't understand the damage done to the range. They don't understand the costs to the taxpayers and you need to manage.
Maybe they should do like they do with the pythons. They could have a 30-day shootout.
Fun idea.
I mean, the government tells you on a dry year on the ranchers, "Okay, we're going to cut, we're going to, you're going to turn out two weeks later, come in two weeks earlier and you're cut 10%, of your cows." The government dictates that to the public.
Right.
Now, how can they not use the same criteria on the horses?
I agree. This thing was in better balance until a bunch of the funds got shifted probably a decade ago to Nevada. Imagine that happening. Because they had a big out of balance issue. When that happened, then everybody got out of balance. Beatty's Butte, I've worked with BLM, I've worked with the Secretary of Interior. They're, they're getting that back into place. They're doing a few of these things to try and get our area back into what it's supposed to be. But gee, with some of these areas, there are hundreds, they're supposed to have a couple hundred horses and they got two or three times that.
We're talking 20% according to newspaper increase per year.
Yeah.
So that's five years, that's double.
Right. And so the other piece is working on sterilization programs, you know, all that sort of stuff. I know, I know, I know, I know. Birth control of wild horses. Yes, ma'am?
Good morning.
Good morning.
My name's Judy Stewart and I'm from Adel, Oregon. I'm a member of the Beatty's Butte Grazing Association.
Oh, perfect.
And I know that you worked really hard to encourage the removal of the horses out there. There were about 1,500 head and the range is being absolutely decimated out there and affected our livelihood as well as the rest of it.
Remember we met?
Right. And you were so good to come and meet with us. And I wanted to recognize you and your staff today for working on that issue. And an ongoing project is to make the herd sustainable. John Kylie's working on that and to develop a training facility with a manageable number of horses on the range to come in and bring a certain number off per year and try to alleviate that holding facility thing that we're concerned about that's so expensive. So thank you so very much. Myron has brought you a little package here. It's not a bomb.
Oh, handbag.
I have another issue.
$250 in value. It's moving.
It's going to be the Lake County.
They're not spreading the seeds along the highway.
It's Mediterranean sage.
Oh, yeah.
And we are, we are privileged to be adjacent to the wilderness area of the BLM. But 20 years ago, I rode up there to get a cow and I saw eight plants.
I've seen it.
And, and so I, I was in the wilderness study area. I didn't want to cut them. You know, I didn't want to go to prison. So I contacted the BLM. And at the time, the weed specialist actually lived in a house that we have in town. And they had sent her to Italy to study Mediterranean sage because that's where it came from. And I told them about it and they says, "Okay, well, we'll monitor it."
Why would you go tell it?
They did monitor it and it bloomed like the ripe one you see and tumbled. And now it has covered the face of the cliff there and into the, into the adjoining gravel pit, which every time a load of gravel is pulled out, is scattering the seeds and it's into our irrigation system.
That's in the irrigation system.
Everywhere. So recently, just a few days ago, I stopped and saw Teresa Minosco and she says, "Okay, well, we'll, we'll do something about it." Well, 20 years later, I, I would like to see something happen. And what really needs to be done, they should go in there with a helicopter and spray it because it's really the only way to access it. The Fish and Wildlife spend two weeks every year flying all over our valley and counting bighorn sheep and deer. If they just put a sprayer underneath that helicopter, they'd have the problem solved. We need more cooperation between private landowners, federal agencies, and there's a lot of conflict between federal agencies that just, we're in a stalemate. And it's, the range here in this valley has just been ruined by Mediterranean sage. And it started in like 1920 with somebody that brought a plant into the Point Ranch.
Oh, is that right?
Yeah. So, and when I was in Cub Scouts, we sprayed it. If they got every Cub Scout in the county, we'd have stopped it then.
Lost our Boy Scouts, they ran out.
But anyway, we need, we need cooperation.
Well, we, we've done some work legislatively over the years on invasive species. Trying to get federally some funding and through the Farm Bill and elsewhere. As I recall, we lose 4,500 acres, is it a day or a week, of range land in the US to invasive species. It is an enormous number that just, you know, you realize how quickly it's getting away from us. And, and this is where locally, we ought to have better collaboration to go get it done. I mean, it's just this way you...
Right. We don't need to monitor, we need to kill it.
Sort of like ISIS. Yes?
Sure's called, Lakeview.
Yes, sir.
WSA.
Yes.
How long can they stay in place?
Forever.
And you got it.
Until Congress acts to remove them. It's one of the most one-sided bets you ever run across. Because the agency can put them in and it takes an act of Congress to get them out.
Wilderness study area.
Wilderness stu-, I'm sorry, he asked how long can WSA's wilderness study areas stay on books? And I, correct me if I'm wrong, but they're there until we basically act in Congress.
Totally a balance, you know, I mean, that's...
Exactly right.
Not to discuss people out of recreation, production, the whole...
And you know what's worse about them? They're actually, it's more restrictive on WSAs than wilderness areas. You can actually do more in a wilderness area than you can in a WSA. And many of these WSAs, they've reviewed and said they're not, they're not worthy of being, becoming wilderness. But they stay on books. And, you know, this is another fight we have with ONDAA and these other environmental groups that will line up the votes. Right, preservationist groups. To, they won't, they will not support any WSA removal. And, you know, it's just, it's all our side. Because they want it at that point. Once it's a WSA, they want it.
You got to tie them up in court so they got to reprove their case.
There you go. Well, we ought to put it, this is where we need to change the law so that the WSAs, you know, if they're ever determined to be not suitable for wilderness, they automatically go off. That there's a time limit on them. There's a bunch of stuff we should do to fix it.
That's a little more common sense than what's probably available in some areas.
Like all of Washington DC? You know, it's 26 square miles surrounded by reality.
A gentleman here says you got to sue this, you got to sue that. Well, we send people to Congress to represent them and to take care of that sort of thing. And they just roll over. And we let these people with the, that know how to work the judicial system, that have unlimited funds, come in and they take all the shots. They tie it up and get the right courts, the right judges, and there it is.
I would suggest they don't roll over, they go in as partners.
Well...
I mean, that's what I face.
I'm trying to be polite.
Yeah.
And I know you guys in Washington, you know, you've got your handful of guys saying, "We're there." You've got people who are willing to help you slave. That's what we need, y'all start working together to get this back into control.
I have a friend that lives up in Portland there. He's quite conservative. I forwarded emails you sent me to him. He even made the comments, "Suppose we could ever get him to run?"
Well, I'll tell you, the only thing...
Get together, local, within the county, to talk about some of these issues.
I, the only thing lowly of the...
You're in the alligator pit.
Well, the only thing lowly of being the only conservative in the Oregon delegation to Congress is being a duck representing Eastern Oregon. This duck has been rooted for beavers, hurls. It'll be painful for him, but no. If they were playing Oregon, that'd be different. Yes. And we got to, then we got to head to Pendleton next.
Well Congressman, my name's John Coger. I'm a lifelong resident here. I'm kind of hesitant to even bring this issue up with everything else that's been in front of you today with the road department, losing our mills and things, but...
Killing horses.
Killing horses. A group of us formed a nonprofit group this spring called Lakeview Community Partnership for the idea of promoting the downtown core. We're looking at having a historical district here. We're helping building owners paint and, and do different things to fix up the town.
Nice.
Well, our problem is this. We have a beautiful historic building here in downtown that, it's an out-of-town owner. And they refuse to do anything with it. It's, it's just terrible. The, the paint's peeling off of it. There's a, a beautiful old cement bench out front that's probably dangerous at this point.
Where's the owner live?
Uh, in 26 square miles.
What shape is this? Oh, is this federal property?
This is a...
This is a setup.
Well, just a small one. But, you know, the postmistress has tried to get help. But we've talked to other folks in the delegations. We've been told to stay quiet because our post office is one of the last ones that is actually federally owned. The, the big push is to lease properties.
Lease the property?
Yeah. And, you know, this is a magnificent building. It sits right next to a, a brand-new library that moved out of this space. You know, a million-dollar library. The senior center is across the street, historic building. The, one of our first hospitals. We have a beautiful Catholic church and other businesses right there. This is one of the poorest buildings in our whole downtown core area. And there's no money for landscaping, no money for paint. FBI spent more than it would cost to fix that up in one day and burned.
Probably spend, buy a new building. Let me see what I can find out.
Thank you.
I don't know how their budget works and all that. I know they've got their own financial woes, postal service overall, but they must have a fund to do payments on their own.
Well, it's not postal service. This is, I'm, I'm assuming it's due GSA.
Postal service, yeah. We'll find out.
Thank you.
We'll, we'll find that absent landlord. Then we'll find the one for the Forest Service. Okay, then I gotta, we're running over, so you go, you get the last...
I'll back up just a couple of statements. I feel we need supervision, but we need horse slaughtering. There are too many horses are being underfed. The people, they're old, they're no good, and we're having too much animal abuse. The fallacy on wild horses is stupid. Years ago, and I'm talking about in the late 1800s, the ranchers shot the studs, turned their own studs out to make better saddle horses. When the Army did away with cavalry, they took all those registered cavalry studs, shot the wild horse studs and turned them out. Then these studs in turn stole several mares, or a lot of mares, off the ranches. They're actually carol horses that are running. They're not wild anymore and it's a bad, bad attitude. I'm, thank you for...
Yeah, no, it's, where some of that is, not as much as you obviously are.
They can't take them across the border alive.
There may even be a restriction on that. I think they're, I think because they're, they're round, they're gathered, they're, you know, they're all, it's all controlled. I'll find out, but I don't think you can do anything with them other than if they're not adopted, then, you know, we maintain them. I don't think, I think you're...
And you can't kill them because they can dead.
Not, it's, if the purpose is for...
Slaughter. Oh, is that it?
Oh, is that?
Yeah, I think that's...
Oh, is that why that one guy, he's got a trouble in Mexico?
Okay, so if the purpose is slaughtering, you can't do it. There you go.
Why don't we give them away as prizes?
I'll get this later tonight in Enterprise. My, my solution to the wolf management program is that we repopulate them in the West Hills of Portland and we'll have a pepper wolf policy.